So we're live now, are we? Okay, thank you. Good morning, everybody, and welcome to the Leeds Health and Wellbeing Board. If you are watching us on YouTube and you would like to ask any questions, please email health-partnerships-team@leeds.gov.uk. My name is councillor Fiona Venner and I've recently taken over the portfolio of adult social care and chairing the Health and Wellbeing Board. I'm also the cabinet member for children and families, which is a role that I've held for just under two years. And prior to that, I worked in frontline mental health services for a very long time, including as the chief executive of Leeds Survival at Crisis Service. So I'm absolutely delighted to be chairing Health and Wellbeing Board. It's a privilege and it brings together a lot of the areas of work that I've worked in for a long time and I'm very passionate about. I'd like to pay a huge tribute and give thanks to my predecessor councillor Rebecca Chalwood, who was the executive board member for adults and health and chaired this board for the last few years and did an absolutely outstanding job at bringing different parts of the city together to address issues of health and wellbeing and tackling health inequalities. And I'd like to welcome some new members to the board, though one of them is actually sadly unwell today. So councillor Selma Arif is the new executive board member for public health. She's a councillor who represents Gipson and Hayhills Ward and has been politically leading the work around the vaccine rollout, particularly tackling the issues of vaccine hesitancy in some communities, which she's incredibly well placed to do. And if you've watched the news at all in the last few months, you would have seen it because she's done a huge amount of really fantastic media work around encouraging vaccine take up. I'd also like to welcome superintendent Richard Close, who has replaced superintendent Jackie Marsh on this board. So a very warm welcome to Leeds and to your first meeting of the Health and Wellbeing Board. So if I could remind members to keep on mute if you're not speaking, make sure that the name on your Zoom picture matches your actual name. And also, if you could please keep your cameras on if you're comfortable doing so. And if you'd like to speak during the meeting, please can you use the virtual hand raising function? So I'm now going to ask members to introduce themselves. So I'll just go down the participant list as it is. So Nav, please. Nav, I don't know if she's unable to mute, but she's provided-
Sorry, Chair, she may just be a little busy sorting out-
No, no, it's Nav surviving, doing the very important job of providing technical support to the meeting.
Yes, sorry, I was just talking about the YouTube stuff, sorry.
No, I don't want to interrupt you. Thank you very much for helping us. Afan, please.
Afan Asain, senior government and partnership doctor, Health Partnerships Team, supporting the meeting today.
Thank you. Harriet, please.
Thanks, Chair. Harriet Spake, Governance Services and Clark to the board.
Thank you. There's somebody whose label is just PowerPoint laptop co-host, is that someone-
Anthony as well.
Oh, okay, thank you. Julian, please.
Good morning, Julian Hartley, chief executive at Leeds Teaching Hospitals.
Thank you. Councillor Smart, please.
Councillor Alice Smart, councillor for Armley Ward.
Thank you. Alistair, please.
Good morning, I'm Alistair Walling, GP and Chief Clinical Information Officer for the City of Leeds.
Thank you. Alison, please.
Hi, I'm Alison Kenyon, I'm Deputy Director of Service Development with Leeds New York Partnership Foundation Trust, and I'm deputising for Sarah Munro, our chief executive today.
Thank you. Catherine, please.
Hi, I'm Catherine Sunt, a part of the Health Partnerships Team, and I've come to present on the Left Shift Blueprint item.
Thank you. Could you rename your iPad if possible, please?
I'll try my best.
Thank you, Cath, it's very helpful, it puts some instructors in the chat.
Ah, good, thank you.
How to do that. Holly, please.
Morning, everyone. Holly Danhauser, I'm not a member of the Health and Wellbeing Board, but I do work on partnerships development on behalf of all of the board members.
Thank you. Jane, please.
Jane Maxwell from Safe for Leeds, I'm deputising for Paul Money today.
Thank you. Jason, please.
Morning, I'm Jason Brock, I'm a GP in Leeds and I'm also the clinical chair of NHS Leeds CCG.
Thank you. Jenny, please.
Hi, I'm Jenny Cook, I'm the Director of Population Health Planning at Leeds CCG.
Thank you. Jim, please.
Good morning, Jim Barwick, Chief Executive of Leeds GP Confederation.
Thank you. John, please.
Good morning, John Beale, I chair Health Watch Leeds.
Thank you. Lindsay, please.
Morning, Lindsay Springall, Head of Pathway Integration for Long-Term Conditions at Leeds CCG, here for the Left Shift Blueprint item.
Thank you. Councillor Harrington, please.
Yes, Norma Harrington, Ward councillor for Wetherby Ward and Chair of Northern East Community Committee.
Thank you. And Paul, please.
Paul Wollam, Head of Leeds Plan.
Thank you. Pip, please.
Hi, yeah, Pip, Forum Central, so here on behalf of Health and Care Third Sector. Good to see you all, thank you.
There's a device listed as Power BO1.
Hello, I'm Brian Power, I'm a GP and Long-Term Conditioned Clinical Lead for NHS Leeds CCG, so I'm here to support the Left Shift Blueprint presentation.
Great, Dr Power, thank you. Richard, please.
Yeah, Richard Close, Superintendent, in charge of partnerships in Leeds.
Thank you. Rob, please.
Rob McQ, Senior Support Officer for Councillor Venner and Councillor Arif.
Thank you. Sarah, please. Sarah Bronston, would you be able to introduce yourself, please?
Sorry, Sarah Bronston, from the Leeds Academic Health Partnership.
Thank you. Thea, please.
I am Thea, I'm Chief Executive of Leeds Community Healthcare Trust. I may put my camera off at points, but I am here, but I need to sometimes walk around the room, which is very distracting if I'm seen, but I will be here.
Thank you. Tim, please.
Good morning, everybody.
Hi, everyone.
Oh, that's you, Tim.
Two Tims.
Tim Pouncy, I had on my list.
Yes.
Good morning, everybody. Tim Pouncy, not Tim Riley. I'm Leeds City Council Children and Families, deputising for Salterick this morning.
Thank you. And Tim Miley, please.
Hi, everyone. Tim Riley, Chief Executive, Leeds CCG.
Thank you. Tony, please.
Thanks, Tony Cook, Chief Officer, Health Partnerships.
And Victoria, please.
Good morning, everyone. Victoria Eaton, Director of Public Health for Leeds City Council.
Thank you. One of the challenges of doing introductions on Zoom is that the participant list continuously moves around. So is there anybody that I've missed?
No. Just me, Chair?
So- Sorry, Cath, would you like to introduce yourself?
Yes, good morning, everyone. Cath Roff, Director of Adults and Health for Leeds City Council.
Okay, thank you very much. Sorry for missing you out. Is there anyone else that I've missed? No, okay. Thank you. So on behalf of the board, I'd very much like to thank everybody for all the work that you're doing and that you've done up to this point in responding to the COVID crisis. We know that the impact of the virus is going to be with us for a long time and that it has profound impacts on health and wellbeing and also in exacerbating inequalities that already existed. And one of our functions as a board is to bring light to those inequalities and find a way to address them in this wonderful diverse city. And during this crisis, it's been really clear that one of the strengths that we have as a city, as our relationships, our partnerships and the approach that we've taken as team leads, and this is more important now than ever before, as we're coming out of this crisis and finding a way forward and supporting the city to deal with the huge fallout from the pandemic and the ongoing crisis. And the team leads approach has been very much highlighted by the success of the vaccine programme, both in how he's worked the city and also the relentless focus that we've had on making sure that no one's left behind in our innovative inequalities vaccination plan, which is focused most on the communities that are most at risk and where there may also be some reluctance to take up the vaccine. So thank you very much for all the work that you've done to date and the work that we will continue to do together. So I'm going to run through the formal bits of the meetings now. So Harriet, have there been any appeals against refusals of inspections of documents?
No appeals today, Chair.
Thank you. Any exempt information?
No exempt information, Chair.
Any late items?
No late items.
Declarations of disposable pecuniary interest? Harriet, are there any declarations of disposable- oh, sorry, I didn't mean to ask you, we have it, board members. Oh, yeah, I should know how to do this, really. I've chaired enough meetings. Members, are there any declarations of disposable pecuniary interests? No, okay, thank you. And apologies for absence, please, Harriet.
Thanks, Chair. Apologies have been received from Sarah Munro, who is represented today by Alison Kenyon, also from Paul Money, who is represented by Jane Maxwell, Salterick, who is represented today by Tim Pouncy, and councillor Arif, and Anthony Keely.
Great, thank you very much. Okay, so the next item on the agenda is questions and public deputations. So when we meet in person, this is an opportunity that any member of the public can come to the Health and Wellbeing Board and ask us any question about any aspects of health or wellbeing in the city. And it's a really important part of the meeting in terms of direct engagement with the public, and we've had some great deputations in the past to the board. What we've been doing while we've been meeting on Zoom is asking if you can submit questions in advance by email, but we don't actually have any today. So we'll move on from that part of the meeting, but as you heard me say at the beginning, there is the opportunity if people want to email questions in, and I've given out the email address to do that. So the next part of the meeting is to look at the minutes of the previous meeting, which was on the 20th of January. So are we happy to approve those minutes as an accurate record? And Afan, I am having a bit of a technical issue, that I can't shut my participants' list. And that means that I'm not, because I've got that across my screen, I can't actually see if anyone's got their hand up and I can't open the chat function.
No one has their hand up, so I'm assuming everyone's happy to agree.
Okay. Is it possible for you to tell me how to shut my participants' list? Because it's meaning I can't, I can't see the chat function, which obviously to be able to see through the meeting. I'm clicking participants, as you normally would, to make it close, but nothing's happening.
On the participants' list, you should have an arrow on the top left, a tiny one that's pointing downwards. If you click on that, you can just press the pause button.
I don't, I'm sorry about this, everybody, but I'm not going to be able to chair the meeting effectively, I can't see the chat function. I can't see that anywhere, actually. I am used to introducing participants at meetings and then closing them off. What I would normally do isn't, isn't working.
You might need to go out and come back in again.
Yes, I was thinking that. I'm very sorry, everyone, for this disruption. I was thinking that might be the way forward. Right, I shall go away and come back in a second. Excuse me, everybody. That's not working either. It would seem my system has entirely frozen, so I'm pressing leave and nothing is happening. Nav, or Afan, could you advise me on what to do? Because I seem to be completely unable to leave the meeting or close my chat function.
I was just going to say, shall I kick you out?
Yes.
I'm not sure I can do that. Just bear me a moment.
About this, everybody. It's the perils of Zoom.
Councillor Venner, sometimes if you press alt and u together, it either closes or opens the participants' list.
Press what? Yeah, and what was the other one?
U.
No, that hasn't worked either.
Chair, how about just clicking the X in the right-hand corner of the screen, trying to leave that way?
I'm on an iPad rather than a-
Oh, I see, okay.
My video's now gone off as well without me touching it. Can you still hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay.
Chair, I can't seem to remove you from the, from the call.
It sounds like your iPad's frozen. It's probably crashed. So the best way to do it is just reset it by holding the power button and the other button for about 30 seconds, allowing it to reset and start again.
Okay, I'll be back in a minute, everybody.
Could I just ask that everybody remains muted and switches their videos off just whilst the Chair gets back in? And Nav, please, could we put up the slide?
Yes, I'll do that now.
I think I'm back. Can everybody hear me?
Yes, we can. Thanks, Chair.
Can we have everyone back? Ah, right, okay. I'm hoping when I do open the chat function, it's not going to freeze my screen again. I'm sorry about that, everybody. I have now not got the participant list up and seem to be able to function as usual. We've got to the minutes, hadn't we? Are there any matters arising or matters of correction from the minutes? Oh, no, we've done those. We were only, we were going on to the next item. So we'll accept the minutes of the 20th of January as an accurate record. And we're moving on to one of the two substantive items of the meeting, which is the Leeds Left Shift Blueprint. And we've got Jenny Cook, Dr Power and Lindsay Springall to present this item. So as a healthcare system, we've been talking about the Leeds Left Shift for a number of years. So it's really helpful to have this item coming today, so we can clearly set out what our ambitions are and how it reflects the Leeds Health and Wellbeing Strategy and our approach to being compassionate city. So the way we structured this, Jenny, as we agreed in the pre-meeting, was that you will present for 20 minutes and then that gives us 25 minutes for discussion. So I'll give you a two-minute warning, but please start whenever you would like to. Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks very much, Chair, for thanksgiving us the time today to talk about the Left Shift Blueprint. Like I said, my name's Jenny Cook and I'm the Director of Population Health Planning at the CCG. And this is quite a new role and I'm quite new to Leeds. So I've only been around for a couple of months now and I can't take too much credit for the work that's going to be presented today. So for most of you, I think this won't be the first time you've seen or heard of the Left Shift Blueprint. And I don't intend to rehearse all of the details in here, especially as we provided you quite a lot of detail in our supporting papers. But essentially, the blueprint sets out our plans to improve the health outcomes of the people of Leeds, and it's been contributed to by partners across the city over the last year. And it's based on a number of really important principles that I'll kind of talk through briefly. So firstly, we'll support people in Leeds to move from being sick and dependent on services to living, aging and dying well. So providing high-quality services is really, really important. But we think it's equally important that we help people stay well, meaning they'll experience a better quality of life and won't need to use our services as much. Secondly, in order to reduce health inequalities, we'll ensure that services are focused better on the needs of people who are socially and economically disadvantaged and those at higher risk of poor health. Thirdly, we'll invest in prevention and personalised proactive care, often but not always resulting in more care taking place in community settings, including people's homes. And thirdly, we'll invest in, and finally, we'll ensure that people are equal partners in their care. We'll shift our focus from what's the matter with you to what really matters to you. So these are obviously not new ideas and we have many examples in Leeds of working in this way already. But what the blueprint does is it sets out ambitious improvements in health outcomes over the next 10 years, and it's backed up by measurable targets to the way services will be delivered over the next five years. So turning these principles and concepts into something really tangible and measurable. So health partners across the city have signed up to the blueprint as the framework for how their city partnership develops over the next 12 months, meaning it should inform how we make decisions around workforce and resource allocation. And whilst strategic indicators are important, nothing that's in the blueprint is really set in stone and we'll continue to iterate and update the plan on an ongoing basis. So and the priorities set out in the blueprint are going to be more important than ever over the next 12 months. This is rightly, you know, there's going to be a lot of focus on backlogs and waiting time as we emerge from COVID, but it's really crucial that we don't take our eye off the ball of reducing health inequalities and improving our population health more broadly. So today, we're asking the board to sign up to the Left Shift Blueprint, both the document and the strategic indicators in there, but also the concept of the Left Shift, Lift, Left Shift more broadly. And we're asking the Health and Wellbeing Board to provide challenge and support to the implementation of the blueprint. So as soon as I finish speaking, we're going to watch a short video outlining Mark's story. We hope this will bring to life what we really mean by Left Shift and demonstrate this isn't new. So Mark talks about the value of the Leeds Programme for Diabetes, which he went on three years ago and still has links with now and the impact it's had on his life. This video is part of the How Does It Feel For Me? programme led by Health Watch. Lindsay and Brian will then take over to talk a bit more about the Long-Term Conditions Programme. The Left Shift is made up of lots of different programmes and linked to the video, we'll hear about what, how the Left Shift has influenced the work of the Long-Term Conditions Programme Board. Then Catherine's going to talk a little bit more about the indicators we're using to ensure we know we're really making a difference with the blueprint, as well as how team leads are working together practically to deliver the plan. And then lastly, I'll summarise and hopefully we'll move into some questions and a helpful discussion. So we've got Mark up on the screen and we can press play with that now.
How have you been managing your health conditions?
It's been self-managed because of what I learned through being on the Leeds Programme. Now, if I hadn't been on that, I wouldn't have understood, I wouldn't have been able to look out for the signs and make adjustments accordingly. But when I was last in hospital, it was because of diabetes. It was because my blood sugars went off the scale, basically. That was probably down to my negligence of not being uber religious about checking blood sugar levels. But to turn it round and to get back on track took using the knowledge that I'd gained on the Leeds Programme.
How does the Leeds Programme work?
The Leeds Programme is something you have the option being referred to when you're first diagnosed as diabetic. It's a series of six classroom-led sessions, which are about two hours each. And it talks you through the risks of certain activities. It talks you through diet, talks you through exercise and the need for all these things. And there's one thing that has drummed into you is that the only person who really knows your diabetes is yourself, because there's no two diabetics of the same. So it trains you to look after yourself, because the more you know about your health, the better decisions you make about them. And after you've done that period, you have, you have a link to them. You know, you can enter them again and say, you know, I need some help with it. Well, the important thing about the Leeds Programme is you don't go on it and become cast adrift. You do feel like you belong. You do feel like if it's not even a clinician that you're talking to, you can reach out and talk to maybe a patient champion and say, you know, this is what I'm suffering from, this is what, you know, did you get the same? How did you deal with it? And it genuinely works.
If you could change one thing to make your experience better, what would it be?
I would like to just be spoken to. I just want them to say, Mark, this is the situation, this is what we're doing, this is what we need to do at this stage. After this has happened, we'll look at it again. I just want to know what's happening and when. You know, I can tell you bad news, but I need to have it for me to make my decisions.
Okay. So hi, I'm Lindsay Springall, Head of Pathway Integration for Long-Term Conditions at Leeds CCG. Firstly, thank you to Health Watch for Mark's story and other similar stories. They're really invaluable and we spent a lot of our diabetes stakeholder group meeting yesterday reviewing Mark's story. There were some additional bits to that, to his story, which we worked through and we have a plan to address. But as well, we can't, you know, we need to focus on the positives, i.e. the Leeds Programme. And that's a great example of how we can deliver our Left Shift Blueprint within long-term conditions. Specifically, our programme measure is detailed within your pack around ensuring that people with one or all long-term conditions are enabled to take an active role in managing their condition by being referred into rehabilitation, structured education and have appropriate patient self-management tools. So I'm going to spend some time focusing specifically on diabetes and then Brian will expand to cover some of our other long-term conditions. So the Leeds Programme that Mark referenced stands for learning, empowering and enabling diabetes self-management. And it's a programme which provides a number of sessions of structured education, as Mark highlighted, for people newly diagnosed type 2 diabetes. It's designed to help people understand their diabetes and their condition, the healthy lifestyles they can make to improve their condition, with the aim of then agreeing a plan of how they'll keep healthy to avoid kind of longer-term complications. And what matters to me is key, and that very much informs the annual review that takes place yearly with primary care. So three years ago in Leeds, we did have limited type 2 diabetes structured education provision. We were able to secure monies from NHS England to be in a position where we now deliver 125 courses of structured education to over 100, to over 1,300 people in Leeds every year. And we aim to target 75% of all newly diagnosed type 2 diabetics each year. And I'm really pleased to say that over 75% of people who start the course go on to complete it and are therefore equipped to better manage their condition. And ultimately, as we've seen in Mark's case, avoid kind of non-elected admissions and attendances at A and E due to their condition, which has obviously been vital over the last year as we've lived with the pandemic. So diabetes costs the NHS over £10 billion per annum, and 80% of that cost is actually spent on managing just the complications alone. Complications like amputations, bagness, kidney failure. And for some added context, in Leeds, we have 44,000 people currently living with diabetes across the city. So by investing in structured education, people are empowered to understand their condition and to make healthy lifestyle choices, preventing the onset of complications. And those healthy lifestyle choices can include things like eye screening, attending regular foot checks, joining local physical activity groups and attending the many weight management classes we commission across the city. Next slide, please. Thank you. So I just wanted to give a feel for some of the other services we've commissioned recently to facilitate patient self-management and personalised care within diabetes care within the city. to facilitate patient self-management and personalised care within diabetes care within the city. So over the last year, we've piloted very low calorie liquid diets to explore diabetes remission for those living with type 2 diabetes in the city. We've seen fantastic results and people have been in a position where their blood sugar levels, due to their new diet and the healthy messaging received and peer support encouraged, where they've been able to, well, sorry, their blood sugar levels have returned to pre-diabetic levels and therefore we've been able to stop the diabetes medication that they're taking, which is brilliant, ultimately kind of avoiding longer term complications and other long-term conditions. Other examples include Freestyle Libra, which is a form of blood glucose monitoring, which is a wearable device that patients wear on their arm and that tracks blood glucose levels and increases patients' ability to monitor accordingly. We now in Leeds have over 40% of our population with type 1 diabetes having that provision, self-monitoring available to them, which is a great achievement. And we're looking at ways we can expand that to individuals, for example, with learning disabilities, being able to have that within the city. Touched upon structured education, so I won't go into that for type 1. And I've also touched upon the annual view process, which is in primary care, our collaborative care support planning process, whereby patients' needs are truly understood by their primary care clinician and shared decision-making vital to inform how a patient and clinician can work together to inform their care plan. We've also, over the last few months, invested in home monitoring, given the current pressures. We have now issued blood pressure monitors to a number of our GP practices within our most deprived areas of the city to, to take away equipment and monitor their blood sugar level, sorry, blood pressure levels. And we've also implemented kidney function testing at home to enable increased access across the city, which is a great achievement and really, really positive developments. In addition, we also work to prevent the occurrence of type 2 diabetes by identifying patients at risk of developing diabetes. And we work wherever possible to refer into the National Diabetes Prevention Programme, which again is one of our key programme indicators within the Left Shift Blueprint, as we have over 35,000 people at risk of type 2 diabetes in Leeds. There's a few points, if we've got time, I'd like to ask Health and Wellbeing Board members to consider at the bottom of my slide. But in the interest of time, I'll pass on to Brian, who can expand upon long-term conditions. Thank you.
Thanks, Lindsay. So I can have the first slide, please. I think I would like to raise the point that the advent of Covid has actually enabled us to adopt different methods of working across Leeds, particularly in terms of working across pathways between primary community and secondary care, but also in terms of supporting patients to be able to be seen virtually and managed differently. And that has been well received by patients. So in part, this has allowed us to both test and innovate some of the principles on the Left Shift Blueprint. So I thought it'd be helpful, and I know this is rather a busy slide, to consider what the Left Shift would mean to people. And I think this is around putting people in control of their condition, so focusing on what matters to people, so that they're ensured that they're developed a proactive support plans to support and manage their condition. And we do this already thousands of times across the city in our annual care planning for patients with long-term conditions. And we want to accelerate that and that's around shared decision-making in practice with the patient, but also about setting goals that matter to the individual. And this as well, we include in our cardiac and pulmonary rehab programme. So we set very individualised and personalised goals for people to be able to achieve. We also want to look at reducing health inequalities. So that's ensuring that populations at increased risk are proactively managed, contacted for support. So those at higher risk of diabetes, vascular conditions, heart conditions are supported to be able to manage their risk and to change their lifestyle as well. The other areas are around living, aging and dying well. So looking at how we can support people differently with social prescribing, more regular reviews of medication. So we're having an increased number of staff being employed within primary community settings, including pharmacists, who will enable us to take more reviews undertaken in collaboration with patients and support patients being able to manage their medications and understanding and adhere to their medications. And the final point on this slide is about more activity happening in community settings. This isn't necessarily in primary or community hubs, but also about individuals being able to have control of their condition and to manage themselves. And the use of technology will help us greatly with that, but also around the use of peer support. And we know that from our experience during Covid with structured education programmes and National Diabetes Prevention Programme, that people have really managed to adapt to the virtual working and have found this very helpful in terms of the peer support that they've had. So next slide, please. So we have had a meeting with the clinical directors from Leeds Teaching Hospital Trusts, who lead on each of the clinical service units and also the clinical directors from the primary care networks. And this was in November last year when we discussed the left shift and what that might mean to them as clinicians. So again, unfortunately, another busy slide, but to try and emphasise as to how it appears from a clinical viewpoint. If we look at integrated working, one of the areas that we know that we've managed to advance quite successfully is the use of areas of virtual wards. And this helps to reduce the risk of hospital admission, helps to support people, manage people at home and helps to discharge patients home earlier with support, so that they're still under the care of the hospital, but they're actually in a community setting. And this also applies to respiratory and we're developing it for patients with heart failure as well. We've integrated working around diabetes leads, so our community and specialist services work as one unit and also work quite closely with primary care. So the ultimate goal with this is to have one service across Leeds so that patients don't see the join and that they actually get a very supported viewpoint from, they get a consistent support from the system. And we've also got same-day specialist access, which has improved during Covid. So I've been given a time watch here, so more activity in community settings, again, focus on self-management. But this building capacity and capability in primary care, we know that through the increased resource that's available, we can recruit pharmacists and increase the role that they've actually got in supporting patients to manage their long-term condition. And we've also reduced attendance at hospital clinics through changing patients from warfarin anticoagulation to a different anticoagulation that requires less intensive monitoring and is, requires less blood tests for patients. So I'll just move quickly to living well with the condition. And again, I've talked about the annual review for patients and shared decision-making and goals that manage the people, people feeling empowered to manage their condition. We do know that many people with long-term conditions have several long-term conditions. And for each 10 years that they have a long-term condition, they're likely to develop a further long-term condition, either related or unrelated. So it's really important that we support people not only to not develop complications from their original condition, but to stop them developing new conditions as well. And the final slide is about the, a final area is about staying healthy. And I think this is really where we place communities and place at the heart of what we do. So understanding and agreeing health priorities with the local communities and using our population health management approach in terms of having the intelligence to understand at a community level what's really important and how do those communities want to see services delivered and how they, what do they want to work on? And again, around influencing health behaviours and lifestyle. So I think really my passion is around prevention and we really need to move, be able to move from treating patients with complications of their condition to preventing them developing those conditions and making Leeds the healthiest place to live in the country. Thank you very much. I'll pass over to Catherine.
Great, thank you, Brian. I'm just going to very quickly take us through how we'll know if we made a difference. And we started off with Mark's story through the How Does It Feel To Me work. And as we hear more and more of those stories, we hope to be able to pick up more elements of the left shift in there. But we do have a framework of measurable indicators. And you'll have seen that in the report. We set some quite high-level outcome ambitions, some system activity metrics and quality experience measures as it's, as the left shift, you know, it seems like a good thing, but we need to make sure we're taking people with us. For each of the indicators, we're committing to be as good, if not better than the England average. And where we can measure it, we commit to reducing the gap between Leeds and deprived Leeds by 10%. And as Jenny stressed, these indicators are measurable. We are building them into the way that we work. And within the Left Shift Blueprint document, you'll see how we're performing against those. If we could just move to the next slide. This is a breakdown of the strategic indicators. These have been developed in partnership, as you'll hopefully see the Health Outcome Ambitions take us through pretty much the life course, the activity metrics, as you might expect, about reducing the growth in non-elected bed days and A and E attendances and increasing proportion of people being cared for in primary and community services. And I think Brian and Lindsay have given some great examples from the perspective of long-term conditions as to how we might do that. If we could just move on to the next slide. And we've heard from long-term conditions, but as you'll have seen in the paper, we have a number, the Left Shift Blueprint is based around a number of programmes and it's within the programmes where we see the detail. And each of, in terms of how we've worked as team leads to develop a blueprint, each of these programmes has boards. So we've been working with those cross-system boards where they've been meeting during Covid and where they haven't been meeting, we've been working with the kind of key professionals in that area in order to pull the plan together. So I'll hand over to Jenny now.
So thanks very much, everybody. And just to wrap up before we get into the questions and discussions, hopefully we've given you a real flavour of what we mean by the left shift. I know for me coming into Leeds, I kept hearing people talk about it and I wasn't entirely sure what it was all meant by it, but kind of as we dig into it and we see those real examples of how we can make a difference to people's lives and professionals, we get a real feel about what left shift is going to mean for us. So I really hope that we can sign up to this as a board and that you can help us kind of make this the framework for how we deliver our work over the next year. So it's just a, there was just a brief reminder there of what we were asking everybody to do. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Very well timed as well. Thank you for getting so much information into, in such a concise way. And thank you for reminding us of the recommendations as well that I'll come back to at the end of this discussion. So I think after my technological meltdown earlier, I think I am now in a position that I can read the chat function. I can see virtual hands. So if anyone would like to comment or ask a question, please can you raise your virtual hand? One of the things, Alison, please, Alison Kenyon.
I've been working with the team on developing the left shift measures. And I think it's, I think it's useful to raise with the board the challenge that we have had in identifying measures for mental health services. And the concept of left shift is sometimes difficult to apply, particularly when we think about the physical location of services, given that over 90% of the services we deliver within our YPFT are done in the community. I think putting people at the heart of their journey and equipping them to manage their condition and to maintain their wellbeing and live long and healthy lives is absolutely the right way to go. And we're completely supportive of that. I think the challenge is finding indicators that will measure that in relation to mental health. So I think it's, it's fair to say when you read the documents, that's why we've still got the, some of these are still in development, we're still having discussions and we're still working together to try and identify the best ways of measuring that impact for the city.
Would, would anyone else like to come back on that? Jenny?
Yeah, I'm just to say, completely agree. There's a real balance, isn't there, between measuring things in a kind of widget county way for the sake of measuring something, but also not really having a sense of a way, making a difference by not measuring anything either. And I think for some areas, that is significantly more challenging than others. So really welcome kind of the continuing work to do with our mental health provider partnerships to find the good balance between those two things.
Thank you. And Jim, please, you've got your hands up.
Thank you, councillor Dennis. Thank you for the presentation. Fully support and familiar with the, with the concepts and the principles of the Left Shift Blueprint. When it's discussed with my colleagues in, in primary care, it's clear that there's, there's a way to go with socialising and making sure it's understood across everybody. So there are different understandings of different aspects of what left shift means. And some of it ends up being quite complicated for people to, to understand. So I'm, I'm interested in how we can as a board, or I can in my organisation, particularly thinking around the construct of local care partnerships, can socialise Left Shift Blueprint and what that means and how that can be enshrined in joint outcomes that we all work for, either through a contractual mechanism or other mechanisms, just to make it more grounded and cemented in, in, in how we are working, in particularly in, in local care partnerships around particular populations involving primary, secondary mental health for sector social care.
Who would like to respond?
So I think there is a real need to understand that it's not just about health, that the wellbeing of individuals and understanding those wider indicators of their wellbeing in the community and the environment that people live in and the communities and how they are supported. Needs form part of that intelligence. I think we've started to do some of that work with our primary care networks and our locality care partnerships. But I think there's a real need to be able to ramp that up and to ensure that the teams that are working to support people have access to this information and are able to make the right decisions regarding that. We must ensure that we don't have a narrow focus just on health, that we've also got the wellbeing of individuals at the core of what we do. So it's really around how we can do that at scale and at pace.
Thank you. Victoria, please.
Thank you, Chair, and thanks Jenny and colleagues for the presentation. To echo Jim's, Jim's comments, also hugely supportive of the work, really familiar with it. And it's, it's great to see the progress. And I guess my point is also a well rehearsed one that links to your comment just now, Brian. That it's how we manage the, the great work you've described and how it links to all of the other work that goes on around the city in, in, in hopefully trying to prevent those 35,000 people in the first place being on that prediabetic list. So I think that as we know from the evidence, around 80% of health is created outside healthcare and 20% from the impacts of healthcare. And, and this, this work absolutely shows that we're really stretching that left shift within health and care. And it's great to hear that all healthcare partners are signed up to the approach. I think as a board, we know there's lots of work going on around children and families, healthy weight, around creating the conditions in communities to have access to healthy diets and, and green space and physical activity. So I think as a system, it would be great to, to kind of see how those other elements will contribute to the outcomes that you, you shared. So I think that's the, the challenge for us as a city to, to start to, to join that other work up around the, the work you've presented. So thank you.
Does anyone want to respond? Victoria's comments?
Yeah, I mean, just to say, thanks, Victoria, and completely agree. And I think that's why I made the point that what's in the Left Shift Blueprint document now is just a starting point, really. And it's, you know, we, we need to kind of keep, keep working, keep iterating and be more ambitious in our plans to kind of meet those strategic ambitions, because they are kind of very ambitious in, in what we've set ourselves as a city.
Thank you. Fear, please.
Thanks, really enjoyable. Obviously very familiar with it as we deliver the education part of it and the community services part of it. And I've been to some of the education sessions and sat in on them, which are really good. I think the issue which really links with Jim's points and Victoria's is we have to always look at the data from these programmes to granular level and to local level, because I'm aware that that hides. programs to granular level and to local level, because I'm aware that that, that hides a huge variation of access. So you can look like you're having a very successful citywide program, but I know, for example, that the DNA rate is twice as big from certain communities than from other communities into those programs. And the, the take up of the program is differential from different groups and different postcodes. So I think as we're going forward, and I know Jenny, it'll be something you're absolutely wanting to do, and Tim, is us understanding as a board that we don't simply look at the data at a citywide level, but we're always looking at the postcode data of the poorest communities. And the DNA rates, which I, I know are very differential into those programs from different communities. So I think that's got to continue to always be our lens. I know otherwise I can fool myself. I'm doing better than we are.
Thank you. Does anyone wish to respond?
Yes, I, I can, Fear, just to, I completely agree. And we are doing detailed work as we, as we kind of re, reset and look at our new modes of delivery and what elements we want to keep and what elements we incorporate going forwards. But we are doing that deep dive into postcode, cross structured education and cross our cardiac and pulmonary services due to the variation that we have been seeing. So that work is underway.
Thank you. Alastair, please.
Thank you, councillor. And thank you for that presentation. Really good, obviously familiar with it and kind of seeing it, very supportive of the, the general approach. My question really is, it builds a little bit on Thea's around some of that analysis and data. And I think there's a couple of things I would want to look at, given the wide ranging support for this. I think one of the things the board ought to be looking at is that we do see a genuine shift in resources in that direction to support the activity. And I think we should be holding ourselves to account as a city to achieve that and to monitor that as well. My other point is around the actual data is that one of the real challenges, we know obviously with the pandemic, we're going to see a deterioration in a lot of measures and a lot of metrics that is probably unavoidable because for all the reasons that we know. As such, we would expect in many of those to see a natural bounce back. And there is a danger that we attribute the bounce back to something more than it is and to the work that we've done. So it's, I haven't got a particular kind of point other than it's really important that we, that we intelligently analyze our data, compare and contrast. So that we, we attribute the right things to the benefit of the right things we're doing and don't end up inadvertently supporting programs that turn out not to work just because we did them at the right time, if that makes sense. And equally, there will be things that don't bounce back that we really need to focus on.
So if I can just pick that point up, Alastair. It's really important to ensure that as we catch up from COVID, we do understand we've got a backlog, not only of elective care, but of long term condition reviews that we're wanting to ensure practices supported to be able to clinically prioritize those patients and to restratify them. So they can identify which patients need to be brought in more urgently and earlier for clinical review to ensure that their control of their condition is, is optimized. So I think that's, that's really important to ensure that we recognize that we will have some capacity constraints going forward in terms of workforce as a result of COVID. And it's ensuring that we can use that workforce and ensure it focuses on those with the highest risk, not only of harm from COVID, but those whose long term condition may well have deteriorated during the, the period of COVID. And so we've included this in our quality improvement scheme within the clinic commissioning group for this year. And we've got a range of tools and supports for practices in order to enable that to happen. So part of this is around addressing the gap that we already know exists. I think with the left shift, we're really setting a very high ambition level for ourselves long term. But we really have to close that gap in terms of what we already know as we go forward to address that longer term ambition. But everything that we do here aligns to what are national priorities. And we're very much aligned to the long term plan and the goals and ambitions within the long term plan, particularly around vascular conditions and diabetes.
Thank you. Tim, please.
Yes, thank you, councillor Venna. Three things really. First one, that was Thea's point around the health inequalities. And I wonder what the shift we really need to make is not that this work isn't being analyzed at that level. But I don't think we present it upfront at that level. So at senior boards and so on, we present the overview and then get reassurance that it's being broken down. I think we need to flip that actually. I think we need to see that breakdown as the, the, the measure, not a bit of work that's done off somewhere else. And we really need to understand that. So I think, and I, and that's, that's the approach we're trying to take through this with that commitment to particularly narrow the, the gap. But I, I do think there's a bit of a cultural change where we don't just, don't just look at the sort of totality of leads in senior meetings and then know that somebody is doing the, the detailed work. We actually take the variation as the main issue that we want, we want to see. The second thing is about the, the different, it's really important that we think through the different levels of data and measurement that we use. And some of them are clearly going to take five to 10 years to shift if we're successful. Others, we can make a real difference in quite quickly. And it's the link between those two types of data that to me are really important. What we've seen in, in the COVID pieces, we've had some very measurable, easy to see pieces of data, some negative around COVID rates, some really positive around vaccination rates. And that has galvanized action. And we need those immediate things that are going to happen in three months, six months, 12 months. The connection then through to the strategic sometimes is evidence based, really good international or even local evidence that shows that if we do these, we do them really well, that happens. Other times, actually, that is, evidence isn't quite as strong and we will learn that as we go through. What is important is we, we are really understanding that link and not getting too hung up on the distant measure as the one that we share, going back to Jim's point. If you're going to galvanize action, get people around something, it needs to, to come back to that more immediate piece. And then I suppose the, the other thing which I think we've talked about a lot is local care partnerships. And making sure that the, 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 the goals and the ambitions are really meaningful at that level. So that to me is, is sort of one of the next challenges. We've got program boards working together across the city. How do we translate what they do back into localities in, in the right way? Now, we've done a lot of that already through the population health management and other schemes around sort of asset based working that I know we've, we've been involved in. But we need to be absolutely consistent and rigorous at doing that going forward.
Thank you. Does anyone wish to respond to any of those points? Okay, we'll, we'll move on to, I've got, sorry, having had a technological meltdown, I'm now going to have a lucky dog to contend with. And I've got John, Hannah and Jason who have their hands up. I'll take those as the last three points and then we'll move to the next item. So if anyone else has questions or comments, could you please put those in the chat? So John, thank you for waiting for so long. Do you want to ask your question?
Thanks very much, Chair. Yeah, I'd just like to pursue a bit further what Thea was talking about. In her presentation, Lindsay said that 75% of the people complete the course and, and that's good. But it doesn't mean that one in four didn't. And I just wondered whether you've done any work to find out what it was about the course that they thought it didn't address what matters to them. Why did they drop out?
Is anyone able to answer that? About the 25% of people who didn't complete the course?
And we, we have looked at that previously when it was very much classroom led. And I think a lot of the feedback at the time from memory was in relation to the time commitment and having to come to a, a physical location across the city. As we've taken the courses online, I think we have actually seen an increase in our uptake. And I guess it's that at this point where we now, we, we consider how we look to now deliver that course to the long term. Whether there are, you know, online sessions that continue or whether we revert back to the classroom, there are some of the decisions we now need to make and we will use that data and use that intelligence and we need to do that engagement with service users, with patients around access. So that's all work that is planned.
We're still on you, councillor Venna.
Thank you. Hannah, if I could come to you now, please.
Thanks. Thanks, councillor Venna. Yeah, just building on some of the points that people have made, I'll be quick. An apology to who came next to the presentation because Alice and I were speaking at a King's Fund event around the How Does It Feel For Me work, but the, I suppose, you know, it would be good just to see that that co-production element is run throughout all these pieces of work. On the voice of inequalities, again, following on what others have said, that, that the voice and experience of, of inequalities sort of sings out of it as well. So particularly in the measures, you know, around how are we hearing that voice of inequalities within that? And I suppose just to profile, we've done a piece of work, working with the communities of interest network, asking them what can health and care services do differently to meet the needs of people with the greatest health inequalities? So it would be good to sort of cross reference that against the left shift blueprint to, 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 you know, to, to make sure that what the communities are saying is sort of playing into that, this important piece of work.
It might be helpful just to come, come back on that, that in terms of the program measures, we talked about the strategic measures and the, and the 10%. Also, within the program measures, we're looking for each measure wherever possible to have that inequalities element in it. And I think as Tim said, not necessarily as the afterthought, but as the actual measure. So I think probably one good example of that in, in one of the programs is, is the mental health. I act on that. It's actually looking at they and older people's access. It's not general. It's because, because we know that those particular communities don't experience the same, the same outcomes. So we're certainly looking to build that into all the program measures and everything we do at a program level as well as just, as, as well as at that strategic level that we talked about in the presentation.
Thank you. And a final question or comment from Jason, please.
Thank you, councillor Venna. I mean, the first thing I'd say, you know, well done to everyone that's involved in this piece of work, putting, putting metrics and stuff that's really measurable about, around a concept like left shift is, is really difficult compared to the way that we've worked in the past. But I, I think it's worth thinking about it in the context of what we're trying to achieve strategically and why it's so important for the Health and Wellbeing Board. Because at face value, it'd be very easy to interpret the work here as moving activity away from, say, the hospital or high medically to other, to other areas. And, and yes, it is on face value. But this is actually about moving to a focus on wellness rather than disease. That's the, the key point here for me that we can often miss. It's not about changing the setting for care. It's about making people more well so they don't need such intensive places for their care. And if we're really going to be successful in, in making our citizens more well, there's something that we need to do, which we've started to hint on in the discussions and some of the work we've done in population health management. We need to understand what those things are, medical and non-medical, that are going to make them unwell in the first place. And the left shift is about starting to focus on that more preventative element, those things that are either optimizing their clinical treatment, but also thinking about their wider health and wellbeing, their wider determinants. And in that, it, it, tackling health inequalities is paramount. So I, I don't think we should lose sight of the track that this is about making people more well and tackling hell in a, health inequalities at the very core of the work around left shift blueprint. And we're going to do that by creating an integrated way of delivering care that's both personalized, but more proactive and preventative in nature. I think also we need to take a step back and say, well, actually, we can't look at this as something that we'd like to have achieved over the next 10, 20 years. The reason that we really need to make it real now is that actually it's important to the recovery following what COVID-19 has done to us. And, and there's, there's two reasons. If we think about the work and the state that people are in following COVID, it's not just about waiting lists. There are waiting lists everywhere, not necessarily just for elective activity, but all sorts of things that are a sort of pent up need over time from a health and wellbeing perspective. And the only way we can deal with that, okay, is focus the resources better on areas of high risk and need. Yes, sweating our assets, assets to increase the activity and efficiency of all our services. But more importantly is we need to stop those lists getting bigger. And the only way we do that is focusing on prevention and helping keep people well. And that's at the heart of this. So I, I just wanted to say something to sort of put it in context really and not lose track of what actually, why it's so important to, to the function of this particular board.
Thank you. And a key task for us as a board is to, is to work out over the, over the coming months and years, how we need to work differently as a board in relation to left shift. So thank you for those comments, Jason, to conclude this item. And thank you very much, Catherine, Jenny, Lindsay, Dr. Power for presenting to us this morning. So the recommendations are that we support the, we sign up to the concept of the left shift blueprint and the strategic indicators and that we support the implementation of the left shift blueprint. So I'm assuming everybody on the board is happy to accept the recommendations. And we'll move on to the next item, which is the lead strategic assessment, lead joint strategic assessment. And we've, we've dedicated an hour to this item because it is really important. It's a statutory function of this board, of the Health and Wellbeing Board, that we produce a joint strategic assessment. So we're now in the process of revisiting our strategic assessment. And obviously it's a really important time to do that because of the crisis that we're still in. And we, we really need an understanding at the moment of what it's like to grow up in Leeds, to live in Leeds, to grow old in Leeds. And the strengths that we have as a city, but also the challenges, especially in recovering from the pandemic. And this piece of work is really important because it will be so key to getting an understanding of the city and as it is at the moment, and shaping how we respond to the pandemic and, and what services we provide and what we need to address going forward. So Simon Foy is going to present. And Simon, we agreed you'd present for up to half an hour and then we took half an hour for discussion. So I'll give you a two minute warning, but please start whenever, whenever you're ready. Okay, thank you.
Thanks, councillor Venna. And, and oh, thank you for the slides coming up as if by magic. Actually, Tony and I are going to do this as a joint presentation, but I'm going to kick it off. I'm Simon Foy. I'm head of policy and intelligence at the council. And I think you all know Tony, who's our chief officer for health partnerships. If, could, have the next slide, please. So what, what we're going to cover, well, hopefully a few things really. Firstly, want to set out the purpose and the context of the joint strategic assessment. But briefly, because hopefully that's covered by the paper and, and most of the time available to us. What we want to do is to share the emerging findings and headlines likely to be in the, 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 the report once we've undertaken all the analysis, but also identify the current lines of inquiry, but are there additional lines of inquiry? Understanding that, you know, the analysis and the data, particular socioeconomic data lags behind what's happening on the ground. So I think that's quite important. And we're still collecting and analyzing the data, but we wanted to engage with the board at the earliest opportunity because your, your input in shaping this is absolutely vital, as councillor Venna has just said. And then the final bit, which is the, hopefully the discussion we'll have is about, do the messages and the emerging findings that you've heard chime? Are there further lines of inquiry and an alternative insights that we, we can draw on and look at? And as I say, that hopefully will set us on the way for the next stage, which is continuing with the detailed analysis and coming back to you in a couple of months with, with, you know, some more fuller findings, because we have got a lot of ground to cover. So the approach that we've done, Tony and I are going to cover the key themes with a kind of a starter slide, which is a bit of narrative. But then there's some kind of pictures, some graphics, which are meant to be illustrative rather than comprehensive. So it's kind of a flavour of the types of things that we're looking at and the likely findings rather than the definitive. So it's kind of a flavour of the types of things that we're looking at and the likely findings rather than a definitive, a definitive picture. So give the next slide, please. So in terms of what JSA thought is in Leeds, and I qualify that in Leeds because we've actually got a slightly different approach to it than perhaps the narrower statutory requirement. So as Councillor Venna said, the primary objective is, in statutory terms, is to inform the direction and the implementation of the health and wellbeing strategy. But in Leeds, with the last two or three iterations, we've, we've kind of widened it. And in part informed by the fact that the wider determinants of health or wellbeing are often, well, are primarily economic and social. But also because we use this, the analysis not only to inform the health and wellbeing strategy, but also the starting point of our other two pillars of kind of city priorities around inclusive growth and increasingly climate change, though, to be fair, the past two iterations haven't said a great deal about climate change. We're also wanting this to become much more real-time and interactive. It is a little bit, the, the current JSA is hosted on the Leeds Observatory, but it's, and, you know, that is a platform where people can explore a wider set of city socio-economic data. But there's a real opportunity to make this much more interactive and much more real-time as much as we can do. It also needs to be sharper in its focus. I think it needs to move beyond providing insights and narrative to what, you know, of the key challenges and opportunities the city faces. But it needs to better inform not only the priorities, but the allocation of resources and, and the assessment and the evaluation of our, of our, of our interventions. And then, again, another longstanding aspiration is for it to much to focus on opportunities and assets as well as needs and challenges. So I think that's what's a little bit different about what we try and do in Leeds. If you can have the next slide, please. And then, again, as Councillor Venna said, this is clearly a bit of a pivotal moment in terms of doing a city analysis, where we've seen the impact of the pandemic over the last 12 months really put a spotlight on the longstanding inequalities that the cities faced and experienced over a much longer period. And I think we have the opportunity to perhaps really further focus on some of those underlying trends and experiences within the city. I think the other thing that is really going to be helpful this time round is that the response to the pandemic has really upped the kind of inter-agency, cross-partnership, key stakeholders or engagement, cooperation, joint working, sharing data, sharing insights. And again, I think we can, we can really draw on that. And if you think of the work around our relationship with the universities, the work of the angst institutions, the potential of the City Office for Data Analytics are all key there. So that kind of hopefully sets up what we're trying to achieve. But as I say, the primary part of what we're going to do now is look at some of the emerging findings. So Tony's going to cover demography, some things around health and wellbeing, but kind of the wider, kind of, some of the wider issues around inequality, that I'm going to pick up young people, the labour market, the economy and climate change. Then we're going to hopefully have a good slug of time for discussion. So I'm going to hand over to Tony.
Thanks, Simon, and thanks, everyone. And particularly thanks to the team, Simon and Frank and colleagues for getting an early cut of this, this data to us. Some really interesting initial findings, I think. Next slide, please. So, yeah, some of this is obviously has been, been relatively well rehearsed, but these trends obviously are here to stay. There's no question. So there's a few slides on this. But just to summarise, the ageing population trends obviously continuing. And as we heard in the previous presentation, serious issues with, with long-term conditions, many people ageing in poor health, with multiple conditions. Looking at the chat and, and stuff that Jim's been, been putting up there, you know, absolutely need to get our heads around how we prevent some of this stuff and how to do that, you know, is rooted in, in all our communities and all the work that we're all doing. A really key one around the structure of population by age, I think, is, is around the school age population. It's growing and becoming more diverse, increasingly concentrated in deprived areas. And I think some real implications for social mobility that we haven't yet investigated on that one. And likewise, obviously, if you've got more older people and a significant increase in young people, inevitably there's a squeeze on the proportion of people of working age. And again, I don't think we fully understood what the, the medium and longer term implications of, of that are. And then finally, we've been asked a few questions about the impact of Brexit. It is, you know, there, there are some possible emerging trends, but probably too early to, to capture those. So there'll be a, a number of lines of inquiry to, to fully understand that, I think, over the coming months. Next slide. So people be aware from the, the last JSA, we had a good look at population and we attend again to project the Leeds population to 2035. That work hasn't happened yet. But obviously, you know, if you look at, at those population pyramids, there's a significant bulge in Leeds with the student population. And as I've mentioned, there's also those issues at either end of the, the age structure as well, which we'll need to work through. Interestingly, in Leeds, we have a 2% more, more women, more females than, than males. Not sure what the implications of that are, probably a positive rather than anything else. But again, the whole point with this is we really need to understand some of those longer term trends. But the one thing that, that we have had a, a look at so far, next slide. Is this. And I'll just ask you to, just to, just to have a look at, at that for, for a few seconds. The grey bar is the current primary school population. And the blue one is new primary age populations. And, and obviously, that's by, by IMD desile. And I think some really significant trends there, obviously in IMD desile one. So the index of multiple deprivation, obviously, you know, measures, it takes, takes in, well, it takes into account a series of indicators around health, economy, employment, community safety, and all areas in the country obviously get, get ranked into one of these desiles. So in Leeds, we have 24% of the population that live in IMD desile one. But as you can see, we have almost 35% of the primary population in that desile. And probably a really stark figure is over 50% of new primary aged pupils in that desile. And that's hugely significant thing for us, I think. And we did look at this the last time round. And I think, you know, when we brought this into the Health and Wellbeing Board, a number of people were quite shocked by this. But I don't think we properly analysed what the implications of, of this trend might be, and we certainly need to do so. But it's also worth looking at desile six to 10 on this slide as well. And what we're seeing is a significant reduction in the number of children starting school in the more affluent areas. You know, so there's a real risk of, of, you know, some of our more affluent areas being broadly child-free. And, and there are some obvious social policy implications for, for all this that we need to understand. Next slide, please. So in terms of health and wellbeing, and you'd almost think we planned this, obviously, because, you know, the, the importance of all the work around the Left Shift Blueprint is, is going to be hugely significant here. But as Simon said, you know, there was huge health inequalities in Leeds. And obviously, you know, the health and wellbeing strategy was rooted in improving the health of the poorest and fastest. But unfortunately, you know, we were picking up some, some gaps widening, some progress stalling in some areas. And, you know, we suspect that those have been exacerbated by, by COVID. Certainly, one thing the data shows us already is that link between mortality and deprivation in COVID. And certainly personally, and I chair the, the shielding bronze group. And we've had some quite stark data presented in, in that group. And it's really clear that ultimately more people are dying in the poorer desiles in that shielded cohort, in that clinically extremely vulnerable cohort, which is obviously extremely worrying for, for all of us really. And we do know that obviously poor living and, and working conditions increase exposure to COVID and other illnesses. And some really strong evidence, obviously, you know, around frontline workers, around housing density and other things as well. And again, the next line there is, you know, that a higher proportion of people with clinically, clinically extremely vulnerable living in that IMD one desile, testing positive for COVID than in the other desiles. So some real, real issues, I think, for us to, to, to take into account. And again, vaccine programme has been mentioned, has been hugely, hugely successful. But some similar associations between deprivation, ethnicity and lower vaccine uptake. Last couple of points on there, housing tenure, the, the map of housing tenure, again, mirrors inequalities and a number of conditions also mirror that inequality. So just going to talk through very quickly a couple of slides that just show, show this. Next slide, please. So this is a, this is the IMD nationally, total coronavirus cases. Clear, clear association, as noted. Next slide. This was the latest IMD for Leeds. The blue ones are in, in the centre of the most deprived. And the, the lighter ones on, on the outer parts of Leeds, obviously the least deprived. And, and you can see, you know, the closer you are to the centre of Leeds, the more likely you are to live in a deprived neighbourhood. Next slide. Housing tenure mirrors this. And, and those, again, those, those blue and green bits in the middle there are both, the blue one is, is council accommodation. And the green one is, is private rented. And we're increasingly seeing a stratification in the housing market between social housing and private rented and owner occupied housing in the more affluent parts of the, the city. And I suspect one of the challenges from, from the previous slide, when we looked at the, the IMD by desiles for children and young people, is because of the nature, increasing nature of the housing market and more private rented accommodation. And obviously, more low wage jobs as well is that young families are increasingly being priced out of some of the more affluent areas of Leeds, which again, has its own significant challenges for health, if we're grouping lots and lots of people together in inner cities, in overcrowded accommodation. And also in, you know, in, in some of the lower skilled work that we know we've got as well. Next slide. So this is the map of vaccine uptake. There is a really positive spin on this, obviously, is that, you know, when we were formulating the vaccine programme and, you know, sort of myself and others were submitting evidence nationally. And, you know, we were being told that 75% vaccine uptake would be a success for the entire programme. You know, the great majority of, of areas in Leeds are over 75%, but unfortunately, there is this, this really clear inequality, as we can see on the slides. And again, that, that mirrors, you know, very, very closely the nature of, of inequality, the nature of the, the housing market, the nature of the employment market, and ultimately the nature of deprivation in the city. Next slide. So I'm not going to go into these in, in a huge amount of detail. It's relatively well rehearsed. But Leeds as a city does have lower life expectancy than the regional and national average. And one of the trends that, that has continued from the last JSA, now we've got two more years of data, is that particular challenge with female life expectancy and a, a widening of the gap. And I think, I can't remember the exact academic, but one of the academics at Oxford University recently was talking about the forward march of, of life expectancy being halted. And there is a, a levelling out, there's no question in Leeds, but also the problem is that widening, as I say, in some groups and in some communities, which we really need to, to understand and, and act on. Next slide. And again, you know, you can look at a number of, of, of conditions and that inequality is really clear. And I think whilst we, we have made some, some progress, obviously, in, you know, the, the bottom right hand one there primarily covers heart conditions and some significant reduction respiratory diseases, and the gap has, has worsened somewhat over the last couple of years. We suspect that's probably the long tail of, of, of things like lung cancer, COPD, as smoking levels haven't declined as fast in deprived Leeds, as in the rest of, of the city. But as you can see, you know, some significant challenges, I think, for, for, for all of us here. So the last slide on, on health and wellbeing is the next, next one. And I think this, this broadly sums up the, the challenge. We've had a good look by Ward. And again, you know, the difference between, you know, a resident of Bermentofson and Richmond Hill. If you're a man, there's an 11 and a half year gap in life expectancy. And if you're a woman, between Bermentofson, Richmond Hill and Adel and Woffdale, there's almost 14 year gap in life expectancies. So these differences are stark and significant and really do reveal why we need all the initiatives that, that we're hearing about around the Left Shift Blueprint and population health management, so we can really drill down, try to understand how long-term conditions emerge in these neighbourhoods and intervene more earlier and ultimately more, more effectively. So I'm going to hand back to, to Simon now, who's going to give us a, a run-through of children and young people and some of the economic issues as well.
Thanks, thanks. So, so again, in terms of young people, there's been a lot of kind of commentary about the impact of, of the restrictions and the pandemic on the, on, on young people. And, you know, we've got particularly concerns regarding, you know, the disengagement of young people, particularly from perhaps our most deprived communities. And those concerns range from radicalisation, increases in antisocial behaviour, but also things like drug-related gang crime and youth crime, and indeed the kind of wider drug-related economy in the city. I think there's a whole range of things there, which are also linked to deeper concerns regarding mental health. And I'm aware that there's some wider work going on in terms of mental health, looking at mental health of young people. So I won't perhaps go into a great deal of detail here. And then there's, there's also, you know, the, the, the impact on educational provision is also likely to have a, a, an impact on the longstanding issues the city faces in terms of our performance of, in terms of education attainment, particularly for the early years children, and particularly for those kids who are, you know, in terms of how the data looks, who are, who are in see a free school meal, so the, the poorer children. So I think there's, there's a whole range of things there. But for the sake of today, I think there's kind of, there's some kind of recent data that perhaps highlights the challenge. DWP and HMRC have released some new data around relative poverty of young people under 16, and it's called before housing costs. It's, I mean, we can, we can share the methodology, but this new data highlights that eight, it's thought that 18% of under 16s in the UK suffer from relative, are in relative poverty before housing costs. That's 18% nationally. The figure for Leeds is 24%, which, you know, is, is almost a quarter of our young people by the government's data, living in relative poverty before housing costs. I think even more stark, the data for Bradford is 38% of under 16s living in relative poverty before housing costs. So for Leeds, 24% equates to about 36,000 young people. For Bradford, 38% equates to about 48,000 young people. And I toss it up quickly for West Yorkshire, and it, it would be about 130, 140,000 young people living in relative poverty, 116 before housing costs. Next slide. And that, that just kind of just looks at some of the national data. And I think it just shows the gap between citywide performance and, and, and the national, but taking Tim's earlier point when I came in. I think it's the, the picture, the local picture that's actually more of more interest in terms of trying to understand the patterns of educational attainment. But that's something we can look at in the full JSA. Next slide, please. So I've got quickly, I mean, the, you know, the wider determinants of health and wellbeing are economic and social. And I think in terms of the economy, I'd just say some things very quickly. You know, Leeds has got some positives around its economy. We've got a long, we've seen a long period of relative economic growth and expansion in the city. We've got a concentration of, you know, key sectors around financial business services, financial technology, health tech, digital and creative, some advanced manufacturing. We've got knowledge-based employment, we've got the university, we've got teaching hospitals. But even before the pandemic, there were some concerns regarding how our kind of, our, our relative productivity compared to the national average and, and perhaps some of the economic growth was And, and perhaps some of the economic growth was actually slowing a little. And I think the more, the wider thing that we discussed previously in last J S A was that a lot of the new jobs and a lot of the new economic activity. Has been in consumer services, which are relatively low skilled and low paid. And that's been a key element of the jobs growth in the city. Obviously, post, with the impact. It's, the, the, the lockdowns have impacted on specific sectors and again, there's a whole range of. Narrative about that, which I won't go into now. But I think there might be some longer term impacts in the economic geography of the city. And again, I'll just perhaps illustrate this with some slides, so the next slide please. So this slide, a bit like Tony's last slide, if you had to pick one slide that explained the economy. And Tony's last slide probably was the one slide you'd need to, a picture of inequality in the city. The X, the, 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 the X axis or the bottom axis is employment rate. And the vertical axis is G D P, basically. And it's indexed for major, major towns and cities in the UK and the ones with names on are the English core cities. But the place you want to be is the top right hand corner, because you've got high productivity and high jobs. And the only core city that goes in that box is Bristol. The next two core cities on the bounds of the kind of best in class box, for want of a better phrase, are Manchester and Leeds. Manchester's there by its G D P output. So Manchester performs well on its economic productivity and not necessarily the jobs it creates. We're on the fringes of the best in class because of the high levels of employment that we have primarily. But we still have relatively half decent G D P, but it's, it's the high levels of employment. Now, the high levels of employment are a bit of a double edged sword, because meant, a lot of the more recent jobs that the cities have, have, have produced. Are, are in the, in consumer services, which are those services which are under severe pressure at the moment. Next slide please. That just, this slide is just G D P for the last twenty years and it just shows the kind of, the impact of the pandemic, next slide. Again, this slide is based, I've, I've nicked this from the, the, the Centre for Cities and it basically looks at the core cities. With the named ones and it does it against two axes, so the vertical axes is. The take up rate of the job, job retention scheme. And the bottom axis is the propensity to work from home or the ability to work from home of the workforce in any given city. So Leeds. Actually, if you look at the impact of the pandemic on the immediate operations of Leeds, we've done relatively red well to compare to some of our. Core city neighbours. So Leeds has, has able to, a high proportion, a relatively high proportion of the workforce in Leeds is able to work from home. And as a result, we haven't perhaps taken up the furlough scheme as many as our neighbours. But again, if you think about the longer term impact of the, if homeworking becomes a norm. And many of our employees can work from home more and more. The knock on impact on the consumer services in the, in the city centre primarily, primarily will be impacted. Next slide please. And again, to illustrate this, this, again, I've nicked this from Waika. And this slide uses mobile phone data for footfall, but also economic interactions. And it tracks the footfall and interaction, interactions in, in our main urban areas in West Yorkshire. And Leeds is the blue line on, which kind of. Is on the bottom throughout the period, which kind of shows. You know, the expected impact on the, of a, of a large city centre with the huge office based activity in the city centre. So it's not entirely unsurprising. But it does show that some of, you know, some of the smaller satellite towns and cities have fared better. Because of that local, that, that, that tracking of local activity through the pandemic. And again, something that I really need to get to the bottom of is why Huddersfield particularly has done very well, but we'll come back to that. So there's, so there's some issues there about the job, the economic geography post pandemic. What that means for suburbs, villages, satellite towns and the city centre. Next slide please. And then finally, climate change, and I mean, again, I can't do this justice at all here, but. There's some major issues around, you know, which are global, national. But, but impact on the quality of people's lives, both in the life quality, but also indirect health impacts. But I guess there was a time in the early days of the pandemic where we were thinking, oh, we're at the start of a renaissance, a new alternative model of living. With traffic free existence, no planes in the sky. The silence of the, the morning walk before work and all of that. Well, I think it's a couple of, there's some issues around that as well. So again, a couple of illustrative slides, so next slide please. So this slide looks at two things, the top, the top graph is footfall leads to city station. The bottom graph is bus use primarily as measured by the Metro's M card. So you see in terms of, you know, Leeds city station before being a bit of a thing for both, an identity. It's both kind of a use of public transport, so leads to the centre as well, but let's think about public transport use. So you saw a huge drop off in public transport use that recovered a little over the summer. And then it's kind of dropped and, and kind of come back a bit as various bits of restrictions have come into place. It's still a long, long way down on what it was and given the aspirations for the use of public transport being central to our active travel and our health and wellbeing. And our climate change policies, clearly that's going to be a cause of concern. The bus use, I think, is, is interesting as well, because in many cases, the use of a train to go to work is a, is. I'm simplifying it, but in, in many cases, is a, is a choice. That people choose to use the train rather than perhaps driving to Leeds. Bus use, I would say, is, is often more, less of a choice for people. It's more people are reliant on a bus to travel around who use a bus. So you've seen bus use higher, but it's still significantly below what it was. So again, there are some questions around, as we go to recover, how we actually. Take up public transport and what that means for patterns of consume, of, of kind of people travelling in and out of Leeds and around the city. So again, that's just an example, but there's a lot more we need to look at in terms of climate change. So you've had a whistle stop tour, next slide please, through, oh no, actually, I want to say this, I haven't finished yet, sorry. This is traffic use and again, the blue. The, this is daily, this is weekly patterns of traffic use. And the blue lines are last, the, the, the pandemic period. And the black line was, is nineteen ninety nine is the baseline. And you saw a huge drop off in car use, but you've actually seen it recover much more than you've seen public transport recover. Which again, is, is, I would say a cause for concern. So, sorry, next final slide now. So we've, you've, we've really trotted through all of that, but it was just to give you a flavour. Clearly you'll have the opportunity for a much deeper look at it when we produce the draft report and come back to you. But we wanted to use the opportunity to, to ask you really whether, you know, what we've saying, does it chime? Are the things that we're missing, are there further insights and sources of data that we, and people we should be talking to? We've, we've kind of brought together a kind of an informal sounding board, some of those people on this call. And we want to engage as broadly as we can and do that as transparently as we can as we pull the analysis together. So I was going to finish there and Tony, I don't know if you've got anything to ask, hopefully, council of any, we've, we've squeezed it within the time available.
Perfect, perfect timing. I think that's almost exactly thirty minutes. So thank you again for. Like the last presenters, managing to get so much information into a relatively short amount of time. So who would like to start with questions or comments? Okay, if no one's come in, I'll, I'll see you. Thea please.
Hello, Simon. It's a long time since I sat and listened to a really excellent presentation from you around all of this. Simon and I worked for some years at the Regional Development Agency. And the reason why I'm mentioning it is because some of the presentation makes me quite sad, because it's. I've heard some of it before and it's about the unmoving nature. And the endemic embedded nature of some of this, which is so overwhelming really. And so, so sad to, to both see it and to know that it is only getting worse. I think I'm particularly taken by the figures right at the beginning, in particular around primary school children. Living in the most deprived areas. There's so much in the presentation, my overall. Feeling and thought at the end of it is we must commit to do one or two things well. And I think we often say that because it can feel so big. That you don't know what to do and where to go. But there are certain things we, 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 I think we do need to, to, to focus on the children. Because the other things we know is that. Educational attainment at eighteen has the biggest impact on your life chances and your health. So if there's anything that yet again comes out of this, it is the need for us to focus on the young.
I would agree with that, I'll just come in there myself for a minute, because we made that point when this was presented to Cabinet, that. We recommended that the work was strengthened around its focus on children and young people. Particularly with reference to the mental health fallout of the pandemic, but also the expected. Huge surge in youth unemployment, sixteen to twenty five year olds are already the group of the most impacted by. Unemployment because they were the group most employed and sectors that have been badly hit. So yes, I would entirely agree with the need to particularly focus on children and we know that Gipson and Hay Hills is. The ward with not only the highest deprivation, but also the highest birth rate, so. You know, and the population of children is growing in our most deprived areas, so I'd very much support those comments from Thea. Pip, you're next please, with your hands up.
Thank you, yes, brilliant, Simon, to, to get all of that, so much to think about and, and take away. I suppose I was just particularly interested in, you know, this relates very much back to the whole conversation around. Health inequalities and how we're working together as a lead system. If we should actually, when we're talking about the key sectors, be including our health and care sector. Which is, I think, an area where we're a bit of a market leader and, and absolutely the third sector and communities. And a part of, of that system, so rather than just thinking, you know, I know you mentioned the teaching hospitals, you know, which obviously is really important, but I think. The offer that we have and the opportunity that we have, particularly around inclusive growth, is to understand. Our health and care as a wider system that, you know, both contributes hugely economically to the city. You know, and also so much around people's health and wellbeing, but also to those opportunities. Huge links to employment and housing and, you know, all of those eighty percent of things as, as Victoria referenced, that are the things that add to health and wellbeing too. So just wondering if, if that's something that we can explore, and I know we've got a conversation with you, Simon, so it'd be good to pick that up.
Simon or Tony, do you want to respond to any of the points made so far before we move to Jason?
Yeah, I can, I can certainly come back on, on, on the last point, so people be aware, I don't think Julian's on the, on the call anymore, obviously, but the. The anchor institutions programme has been a really excellent way of, of, of doing some of that work, which is using things like the purchasing and commissioning power. Of some of the big organisations to try and drive change in the communities. And try and reshape their workforce and access and frontline workforce in, in, in particular. We are looking to further expand that scheme, so we, we've actually got through a shortlist of ninety areas down to the last nine. To develop that and to develop a, a, a more of a community focus on, on the anchors model as well. And then finally, on, you know, the children and young people stuff, you know, absolutely, we brought this out really clearly in the last George Street assessment. But I think we were in a bit of a sort of, sort of slightly paralysed by, by what to do and how to, to really respond to that rapid growth of children and young people in, in, in some of those. Depressed areas. I think now, you know, we, we probably know what, some of the things that work around that mentoring, around promoting social mobility. Around employment opportunities, but we probably need to build a, a bit of a programme around it and probably need to, to do that work across both the Health and Wellbeing Board. And the Children's Trust Board as well, really. But yeah, all, all this work is, is, is about what are, you know, what are the implications for commissioning and for service redesign and I think, you know, we've got a really strong. Opportunity now, you know, with the built back fair agenda and some of the evidence that's outlined by Mam, for example, in his, in his recent review to, to really use that. Develop our thinking and develop our interventions.
Thank you, Jason please.
So again, I want to say just thank you for that presentation, I, I found it fascinating. I think it, it tells quite an interesting story that others have already concluded, a bit about where we are as a city in terms of. The outcomes and life expectancy, et cetera, for a population deprivation by geography. But it's also telling us a bit about the drivers of that and, and why we end up with those outcomes and we're seeing the importance of. Opportunities in terms of employment and young people, but also educational attainment and, and, you know, the, the thing that. You know, underpins all that difference is deprivation and inequality, which is, which is key. And then towards the end of the, the presentation, we're seeing how people are living their lives differently. Primarily because of the impact of the pandemic and there's a couple of things in there really. So we're seeing less traffic into the city centre. We're seeing people using modes of transport that might be less good for our environmental ambitions. But what we're also seeing is potentially a strengthening of more local communities and smaller communities doing this and that. And, and, and the bit that I'd be really interested in that wasn't in the presentation necessarily is how that. Links to the more longer term trend, so is that something that was happening anyway, that has been really accelerated by the impact of Covid nineteen? Or is that something that has been changed significantly by it? Because I think we need to understand what the implications of the way people are going to be living is for what that might do for outcomes and opportunity going forward.
Thank you, is anyone able to respond to that question on transport, Simon?
Yeah, I, I think. It's a bit of both actually, Jason, so, so in kind of macro trends, you could argue that Leeds city centre was. Soaking up economic activity from some of the neighbouring towns. So, so to a certain extent, that has paused and even reversed. So there's a relationship between the, the kind of, the major economic centres Leeds and then the, the, the major centres of our kind of neighbours. And I think that's kind of, to the extent to which that I, I, I would expect that to return to a, a, a longer term trend. Once we get back to some form of normal. The relationship between the city centres and satellites and suburbs is, is more interesting and if. Homeworking is here to stay, et cetera, then that trend may well continue. And although, and again, it's a mixed bag, there's some real positives around sustainability there. But there's also some issues around employment and the workforce, because if consumer service activity grows up, it's much more strongly in our satellites. Where's the workforce going to come from? Because as Tony said, they don't, the people who earn those relatively low wages don't live in those places. And our public transport isn't designed to move people around the city, it's designed to move people into the city. So again, there's a lot of unknowns, but clearly a lot more to, to understand.
Thank you, Simon, Alison please.
Yeah, so really, really interesting presentation and I just wonder that when we do the, the actual joint needs assessment. We also dig deeper into the different protective characteristics of some of these deprived communities and particularly around young people. And looking at other associated issues like, for example, English as a second language, because all these are going to impact on the. The, the resources that educational establishments have today, but also build up the resources that we're going to need for the future. And also the needs of those children and the families are going to be critical as well. So I'd like to also see whether particular communities of interest are more adversely affected, so we know, for example, that furlough and. Redundances have massively affected women, but also black people disproportionately. And if lots of young people have lost their jobs, then I suspect more black people have lost their jobs. But also let's look at gypsy traveller communities, let's look LGBT communities, so I think getting a, a more detailed picture. Will really help us to identify the strengths. will really help us to identify the strengths of work and the themes that we, we need to develop over the coming years.
Alison, I've read some research on that recently. It's absolutely the case that a high percentage of black young people and a high percentage of Asian young people have lost their jobs compared to white people. It's something like twenty five percent unemployment among young black people and thirteen percent among young non-bame people, white people. So that is, that is a really stark outcome of, of the last year. Victoria, please.
Thank you, Chair. Two, two points. The first one is, first of all, Simon, Tony, thanks so much. You know, it's, it's, it's so key and incredibly challenging. The first point I wanted to make was in terms of the gap, the gap clearly between deprived Leeds and Leeds as a whole, and non-deprived Leeds is, is, is absolutely critical. The, the point I wanted to make was also about the, the, the scale of the population in each of those categories. So the, the slide on the number of primary school children and new primary school children in quintile one, the, the most deprived ten percent is really powerful. But so is the, the breakdown of the whole population in quintile one. And it's, the latest figures I got was that's well over two hundred thousand of our population, kind of one in four of, of the people of Leeds lives in that most deprived ten percent. So it's really interesting that when we just look at the gap, the gap's really important, but it doesn't take into account that scale of, of just how many of our citizens we're talking about. So had some conversations with York recently to say, yeah, well, we've got a similar gap. Now, less than one percent of the population of York live in the most deprived ten percent. We've got more than a quarter of Leeds living in that most deprived ten percent. You know, York has a gap, Cambridge has a gap. But it is the, you know, it's about the kind of scale and majority of people who are facing those issues. So I guess that's just a challenge for us to be able to work at scale with our inequalities programmes, rather than these just being kind of quite niche things for a few people in a few streets, as in, as is the case in other cities. The second point was around the links to Thea's point about moving on and, and, and what are the priorities that we want to focus on? And, and also in terms of the work that Michael Marmot's done this year, people refer to the Marmot Report. And I think what's really important is that he's done two reports recently. So the first one that came out right at the beginning of the pandemic, February, March last year, was the one that reviewed all the evidence in terms of what works around health inequalities ten years on and how has that made a difference? And it was a real shame that was overtaken by the beginning of the pandemic. And we absolutely need not to lose sight of, of that work because it absolutely will shape what we should be doing as a city. And then the report that came out in February this year just gone and was the Build Back Fairer impact of COVID on inequalities, which very much followed on from that ten year review report. So I guess in terms of that challenge around, so what, you know, rather than describing the problem, how, what are we going to do about it? That, that menu of evidence is very, very clearly set out through the Marmot Report. And as a system, we probably need to have a conversation about which elements we want to focus on more and first and, and fastest. But, and how explicitly we want to be a Marmot City, you know, some, some cities are very explicitly signing up to that, that, that direction of travel. So I, I, I think it would be, it would be great for us to have a, a, a conversation about how much we wanted to, to use that evidence to inform the refresh of the health and wellbeing strategy in Leeds. So it feels an exciting time to do it. And the JSA will be really key in helping us to, to shape that work. So thanks, Chair. I just wanted to make those points.
Thank you. Simon or Tony, do you want to respond to the points made by either Alison or Victoria before we move to Council Harrington?
If, if I, sorry. Just, I just, the one on, on scale, I think, because the scale of deprivation in the city, Leeds often loses out because government funding is done on the proportion of, 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 of disadvantage often. And because we've got such a wide boundary that takes into kind of relatively affluent rural parts, we often need it kind of underplays. But if you just count the number of neighbourhoods or the number of people who live in the kind of highest quartiles of deprivation, the scale is on, on, is on the par with Liverpool and Manchester. And I think the national, no, I don't think that, that, that passes central government by. I don't, I think they, when they look for cities that are deprived, they think of Manchester and Liverpool. They don't think of Leeds, but there is a, there's a Manchester or Liverpool in the centre of Leeds is a local authority boundary.
Yeah, shall I, shall I just come in on, on the back of the Marmot points and, and the points about different communities? So yeah, I mean, I know we've touched on this, Victoria, and, and Build Back Fairer has got to be absolutely at the heart of the, the health and wellbeing strategy when we refresh that. And, and some of the work actually that Holly and others were, were leading beforehand was, you know, was really on the money, you know, rooted in a, in an approach to fairness. So actually, there's been a lot of thinking already and, and absolutely we need to do that. I think in relation to, to some of the data, it, it doesn't stand still, actually. So obviously, as people might imagine, there's a lot more data behind these, the, these slides. And if you look at the IMD data, we do have twenty four percent of people living in that poorest decile. But it was, so that's, you know, nearly one in, one in four. But it was nineteen percent, so nearly one in five in two thousand and ten. So it has worsened. And, and that does need pointing out, you know, so just as it worsens, you know, it can improve at some point in the future. There's no question. And I think in terms of understanding different communities, you know, we've really understood during COVID, particularly on things like vaccine programme, the shielding programme and how we manage outbreaks, that we really have to take into consideration the differences between different communities and their differences of access and, and some of the, the, the issues and concerns. But obviously, not all communities, not all BAME communities, for example, are the same. There, there are significant differences. And likewise, not all communities that are poor lack resilience. Some of them have done, you know, really well with lots of volunteering and lots of community efforts during COVID. And it's about also how we build on some of those strengths and assets. And I think that's probably one of the things that we need to better bring out, you know, when this comes back to the, the Health and Wellbeing Board.
Council Harrington, thank you for waiting so long. Come in, please, ask your question or make your comments.
That's okay. It's just a comment, really, with both of the items that we've been discussing this morning, I'd just like to make the point that we know that the most deprived areas are in the inner city areas, of course they are. But there are pockets of deprivation for education attainment, for employment opportunities, for financial resources in many of the outer areas as well. Even All Woodley has one of the areas of deprivation that are listed on, on, for Leeds. But in all of the outer areas, there are pockets. And transport is a major influencer on that. And if you live in some of the outer areas, if you get outside the ring road, there isn't a bus. Or certainly not enough buses to get you to work and back at the right times. So what, anybody who's dealing with anything across the city, I would say, please don't forget that there are areas of deprivation across all of the kind of things that we've been looking at this morning in many of the outer areas. And we don't want to leave those people behind. Talking about fairness, I totally get that. And I know that we need to concentrate on the worst areas. But please don't forget that some of those areas will become worse if we don't do something about it. And in a lot of the outer areas, as far as redundancies go and furlough and people being out of work because they're in service industries, a lot of the outer areas have suffered dramatically from that. And there are many, many families in my own ward, for instance, who are now having to access the food bank that weren't using it before, but purely because of their, their very, very low income and because the rates of furlough. And we, we anticipate that that is going to continue for some considerable time. So just please don't forget about the small pockets that are in the outer areas. Thank you very much.
Thank you. I was very struck by that, Council Harrington, when I went to visit Wetherby Children's Centre a couple of years ago, which, as you'll know, is, is on the edge of a council estate. And they were describing the challenges that they have and Harewood have in terms of children's centres covering a massive geographical area with very, very poor transport links. It's a really different challenge than, you know, it was very, it was, it was a learning point for me as someone who represents an inner city ward that's actually quite a small geographical area. I think that's a, a really good challenge to put to us, that the pockets of deprivation in the outer areas, it's very difficult for people to get to services and support. And of course, because the overall area is not deprived, there's less, less resource. Yeah, I don't know if anyone else wants to respond to that point before we move to Tim. Okay, Tim, I was wondering, I was, in, I, I know you have your own questions or comments that you wish to make, but I was also interested in your view on the points Thea raised around children and young people and from your perspective in your role, how the left shift blueprint can, can address those challenges.
Yeah, thanks, Catherine. I was, I was going to touch on that, a couple of things. I think, like, just very much as Thea said, it's, and others have already commented, at one level, it's quite, it's quite depressing looking at some of those figures and, and presents a real challenge for us as a city. And I suppose I come as it, both as a, as a human being and a leader in the general sense across Leeds, but also from an NHS perspective. And we know that most of NH, well, a big disproportionate amount of NHS activity is driven by those who are suffering inequality. And therefore, what these figures are indicating to us is that there's going to be a higher demand on those services that we are trying to left shift from going forward, whether those are mental health acute services, general practice, community based services. The reality is that unless we address the health inequalities and, and the numbers, the sheer scale, what we're going to see is a growing demand for them, not a reducing demand. And I suppose that then led me to, well, what is, what is the NHS's contribution in this broader conversation? What can it be? And I think why I was really keen on, on, and absolutely agree with Thea. If we think about that education attainment goal at eighteen, and it's a hugely significant indicator of what happens next. And then we, we think through what are the drivers for people who are not, and who don't achieve. And we then start to look into things like children's mental health and wellbeing. You can see that the NHS can have a significant impact in the medium to long term if we get those things right. Because those will be factors in why children don't attain. So it's, it's making sure that we join up and really understand some of the drivers behind those kind of factors. I think the, the, so, and, and those are really strong in the left shift blueprint. I've always said, and the left shift blueprint is, is as much about shifting resource from adults to children as it is from acute to primary and to community. It, it's really important that we invest and intervene as early as possible and work together around that agenda. I suppose then I thought, we, we often talk, don't we, of the, well, eighty, we know eighty percent or eighty five percent of the factors are wider determinants. Well, there is clearly a part the NHS can play in that, particularly the anchor institutions. And we, we really need to think about that quite carefully. But I don't want us to lose that fifteen, twenty percent either. Actually, if we can, if we can really work well to address that twenty percent, that is a major contribution to addressing health inequalities and outcomes. And I, I do think some of the work we're doing around local care partnerships, some of the work we've been doing around sort of developing outcomes and population health management should be a major contributor. So if, if we could deliver all that twenty percent gain, that would be a significant step in the right direction. And I think the children's piece is probably one of the primary ways that we can do that in reality. So I'll stop there.
Thank you. Tim, Pouncy, please.
Thank you. I, I thought that presentation was great and it put me in mind again of a conversation that we had probably only last week at the Integrated Commission Executive about thinking about that left shift paradigm and, and how we work across some of those population cohorts from a children's perspective. And, and I think we probably, excuse me, had three particular cohorts in mind. Children and young people with SEND, children and young people experiencing adverse childhood experiences and those experiencing mental health issues. And that there was a real read across between some of those graphs and some of the geographical analysis of the populations, particularly for the last of, the last two of those cohorts. But then really building on everything that we've just talked about in terms of some of those recommendations that are coming out of Building Back Fairer. And I'd just support everything that Tim Riley's just said, but, but just to nail it down really in terms of that piece of work that I'm involved with, with both Jane Mishenko and Vishapeshan Sykes, looking at focusing on mental health in schools, preventative work, early indicators of, of, of need. And I think that's where we, we can really link in with some of the data that Simon's got. And perhaps the other one that I would mention that's, that's sort of been hinted at before is the inequalities in early, early years development. So I think there's a real significant piece of work to do to pull all those together because it links across so many things in terms of being data driven and all the health inequalities and the left shift.
Thank you. Simon, Tony, do you want to respond to points made, made by either, either of the Tims?
I mean, just more broadly, I guess, about how we perceive and look at young people. A growing young population for a northern city should be an asset because it actually is out of step with what's happening in many other northern cities where you're seeing a depopulation of a young people and, and an economic migration of our most talented young people to other places. So having a growing young population isn't the norm, really, particularly the scale of our growing young population. So it's about how we turn the concerns that we've got, we're talking about this, this morning. And primarily, I would say, as, as many have said, educational attainment and the nature of labour market offer for young people being absolutely critical in that into the real asset that it should be for the city, really. So I think, so I think, as I, like, lots of people have said, putting young people at the heart of the responses is absolutely going to be vitally important.
Thank you. Does anyone want to make a final concluding comment before we move on to the next item? Simon or Tony, do you have any last points you would like to make?
Just, just, just one thing that maybe we haven't pointed out, which is in the report, is there will be an ask for, obviously, for, for volunteers, for, for a steering group. We've already nobbled a few people, but there are a few others that I think would be great to, to have on board as well. So watch this space on that one. But yeah, just a big thanks for everybody for a really good conversation. This is a really early cut of the data. So obviously, there'll be more detailed analysis and there'll be a lot of things also that we bring into the conversation that we'll need to sit behind this. For example, Sarah Skinning Public Health did an excellent piece of work on, on mental health that we'll need factoring in. And there are a number of other pieces of work that will also inform what we're doing as well.
Okay, thank you. Thank you both very much for that presentation and a really good discussion. So the recommendations we're being asked to consider are, to consider the proposed approach of the JSA, to provide a steer on the focus proposed, including stakeholder engagement and partnership working, consider the emerging likely headlines and potential lines of inquiry, agree to receive a further report when detailed work has progressed and encourage wider engagement with the JSA development process. So I'm assuming everybody's happy to accept those as the recommendations of the report. I think we've given you a steer particularly around putting children and our people at the heart of the, of the piece of work. So thank you very much, everybody. We'll move on now to, so we've just got a few items that are here for kind of final sign off, really, that we've had in-depth discussions on at previous meetings. So we've just allocated five minutes for each of these. And we may not even need that, actually, because we did ask people to submit questions or comments in advance if you had any, which nobody has. So the first one is the Future In Mind Strategy. I'm very proud of this as the Chair of the Future Of Mind Board. It felt very timely that it happened to be due for refresh at this point in time because we've talked already in this meeting about the impacts of COVID on children and young people. So the strategy, the strategy has been very much rewritten in the context of COVID. You know, with a particular emphasis on you know, with a particular emphasis on trauma and also on transitions, which is also a priority in the old age mental health strategy. I've read this quite a lot of times. And I think one of the things that really stands out from it is it's been approved by children and young people in terms of making sure it's readable for children and young people. And I think that really shows when you read it, it's very accessible and it's got a lot of direct pieces of writing and quotes from children themselves. So thank you very much to everyone who's been involved in that strategy. It's for 21 to 26. Does anyone have any questions or comments? Are we happy just to finally approve the strategy? Okay, I'll take that as meaning that it's approved. And next, we have the Leeds Maternity Strategy. We had a really powerful session on this in September. We had the listening exercise where we heard direct firsthand experience from people, you know, who'd been, you know, used on maternity services or worked in them, particularly looked at the experiences of people from BAME groups and maternity services. And obviously, there's been a lot of focus on that nationally with the higher rates of maternal death in black women. So this is again a strategy that's coming here for final approval. And again, thank you very much to everyone who's been involved in its development. Does anybody have any questions or comments before we formally sign this one off? And it's again a strategy that's very critical to our overall health and wellbeing strategy. Okay, thank you. We next have the CCG Annual Report. So the CCGs have a duty to reflect on the health and wellbeing strategy as part of their annual report. And although CCGs this year, because of COVID, were given dispensation around that, it's positive that Leeds CCG has continued to produce a report and bring it here. So we're asked to note the process to develop the annual report and its contribution and the contribution of the CCG to the delivery of the health and wellbeing strategy. Does anyone want any, does anyone want to comment on this or have any questions? So we're asked to note the process to develop the annual report and note its contribution to the health and wellbeing strategy. So I presume we're happy to do that. Thank you. And then our next items are just for noting. So these are the palliative and end-of-life care strategy, which, again, we've had in-depth discussions on in previous meetings, the health and care quarterly finance reporting, and a report connecting the wider partnership work of the Health and Wellbeing Board. Okay, so those items are just for noting, so I won't open those up to questions or comments. Does anybody have any items of any other business? No? Okay. So thank you very much, everybody who is watching us on YouTube. Thank you to everyone who's contributed to the meeting today, to the presenters and to everyone for your contributions to the discussion. Thank you for your patience and forbearance when I had to leave the meeting and come back because my iPad froze. Our Lord Mayor had a technological collapse at one point when she was chairing full council. So I'm taking comfort in being a good company. So again, thank you very much for all your work during a challenging year. I'm sure we're all proud of how Leeds has responded. And, you know, the continued focus that we will have on challenging inequality and making Leeds the best city to grow up in, the best city to live in and the best city to grow old in. So with that, thank you very much for being here today, whether you're here on Zoom or you're watching us on YouTube. And with that, I will close the meeting. Thank you.